We're gonna start, I guess. Okay. Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Slater.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certified at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is fourth day of June 2018.
Three consent agenda. All of following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at a board meeting, will be approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion. Three, one addition of items of new business to the agenda. Three point two minutes from the May 7th, 2008 regular meeting. Three point three approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investment. Three point four approval of the activity fund report. Approval of the activity fundraiser. Approval of activity inter-account transfers. Approval of the child nutrition report. And three point eight approval of the surplus items, property items.
We have no additional items to the agenda. Anybody see any problems with the minutes, any additions or corrections?
Question.
Okay. Look at your May revenue report. You can see that at this point in time, we have collected 102% of what was projected for 2018. So our budget is 18,834,205,149. So really good shape with all the collections. State aid is down, but we knew that because we were no longer in a formula. We did get some, that we do get cut earnings, so that's the reason for that. So really good standings there with our monies. Investments are all the same. David does a great job making sure that we're up to date with all of those, and they look like they're all up to date going through 21. Any questions on that? Activity fund report on the year-to-date, you can see the money that are in different categories. So ended up with a total of $298,096.25 in our activity funds for the year at this point in time.
On 9/31, Steve, seniors of 2018, what happens to that 7/92? Does that just roll back over to, I mean, does that go?
They will vote.
Okay.
And that will go into the incoming, I think is what they've done.
I was just curious, I didn't know. Okay. Thank you.
They usually give it to the incoming ninth grade class, if they've got a little bit of seed money.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Still some there from '17.
Activity fundraisers. Just have one. Last year, we had a baseball tournament and went to the tourism to ask for $3,000 to help with the expenses. The umpires now, they're going to the tourism to ask for that. And any profit or anything will go into the baseball account, but we're bringing in people from all over, Kansas, Oklahoma, I think maybe even Texas, I'm not sure. But we did that last summer. Inter-acc transfers and activity. We've got $8.44 going from the teacher vending, which is no longer active, and then go into the Alba Middle School account. And then the second one is $174.95 from middle school ice cream account to the Alba Middle School Student Council account. Are you gonna get that fixed, or are you just gonna?
We would like to get it fixed, although it costs a lot of money.
What's it cost to get a new and find out?
Oh, a new one, okay, a lot. It depends.
Might be a lease purchase type situation like they started with.
It depends if you're gonna get all the flavors and everything, but that seems to be a hassle too.
And we have child nutrition report, and I'm gonna look at the overall report. And the way it looks to me, looking at the expenses and the income and sales force, that the district is gonna have to just offset $71,000 this year in the food, which is pretty good. Again, our income was really good this year because of the number of kids that we're eating in the cafeteria and so forth, but just looking at the figures that we got there, preliminary case costs, the school just general fund, $71,000 extra. And that's pretty good. I think last year was about $95,000. And we have some surplus items. Band, we have some old instruments. We've got old Ludwig drum harnesses, office chair, fiberglass king tuba, alto sax, and a bass clarinet. And cafeteria, we have old freezer at Longfellow Cafeteria and a refrigerator, and they've been replaced, and a printer from the principal's office at the middle school. And that's all I have on consented items there. Any questions?
I'd make the motion to approve three, one through three point eight.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year 18. And we do lose the mass as well. Four one, general fund stated. Building fund, four point two. Fund number 21, year number one, it's stated there. Four three, child nutrition fund number 22, change orders as presented. And the gift fund, number 81, with POs as presented.
Okay, if you'll look at the encumbrances for the general fund. We've got purchase order 780, that's Star Lumber Company, different supply for the 791, Northwest Electrical, that's electrical services to the portable classroom, that is delivered, it's together, but it's not complete at this point in time. And also Vendetti Plumbing for drain for that, 792. Treat Solutions, 795, our district summer supplies, cleaning supplies for the total We're replacing some carpet, 805 Zeller floor covering, and high school fax flooring, and also 807 library flooring. I don't know when the last time we replaced any carpet there. Maybe when Mrs. Martin was still the librarian, I'm not sure on that. And then we've already encumbered your summer lodging for the Oklahoma School Board, which will be in August at 814. And then 817, Gray Dawn Mechanical. Mrs. Martini got three quotes. This was the best quote on a new unit at the middle school for the band, and it was gone. It was out for the last probably three weeks of school, and we tried getting people to come in. We had Alf Al Electric, we had some other people come in and give us some quotes, because we just didn't wanna do for $12,000 on quotes, so it took us a while. So we had some hot kids there that last couple of weeks, I tell you. And then 823, Ross Transportation. Mr. Ellis is in the process of taking our lease buses down, so those are just general maintenance that we will have over the summer. Any questions on any of those other encumbrances that you may have?
Purchase order 777, is that for services over the summer?
Yes. Is that right, or is that just this last phase still? It is the last phase still? Okay.
Do we provide those services over the summer?
We do. If, it's dependent upon each individual kid, and the IEP would've stated that yes, we do. Speech therapy, physical therapy, nutritional therapy. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, if we go down to building fund. We're gonna go ahead and do a sidewalk from the original sidewalk that goes north and south there, all the way to the two portable classrooms for our handicap kids. Last year, we just had a black mat that we did, but we're gonna connect both of them with sidewalk going out together. Child nutrition, we don't have anything. Gift, this was part of $35,000 that Sure Trust gave us for some lighting and everything. This is the end of that money, and that was for some more lighting in the auditorium.
And they weren't. Lots of equipment.
Well, Mr. Martin said, after 37 years, I finally got it right, so we got enough lighting in there for his picture. So we're gonna get it in now.
Even lighting.
Yeah, no dark spots. You're right, it is nice.
Did you notice?
Yes, I did.
Of course, you're on stage.
And when you're up there, you sure can't see anybody, sir.
What up, new?
Talking ugly about me, I couldn't see you.
Lights were bright, weren't they, coming in at us?
Couldn't see you. Looks nice. Great fortune.
So that's all I have to report on those. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
On the general fund, 789, Pro Sound and Stage Lighting, did we purchase some of that?
Yes.
Lighting, and then some of the others was part of the gift fund?
Well, that's what we added after we spent that $2,900 to make sure that we did have that full lighting, so that we could see this thing.
Got it.
And we did that the last three weeks of school. So that's right.
I would vote to approve four point one to four point four.
Second. Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Five, principals' reports.
I think we're just gonna pass on those, because we were gonna talk about our testing, and Tim's gonna talk a little bit about our accountability and our profile at this point in time. And again, I'm sure that he will tell you, these are on test from a year ago, they're not even tested the same things that we tested this year, so they're new. But anyway. Go ahead, Tim.
But don't be useless.
Well, they're our top.
Our top, that's a better word.
My vote here, I'm real here.
So we've got the test report back from the Office of Educational Quality and Accountability. What that is, it's a, it's a different governmental group that looks at pre-K through 20 years of age students, and how their scoring as, as compared to their community, and then their state, and then also within their district. So although these scores, they, they sent in the packet that the standards are higher, they raised the scut, the cut scores, and one of the things that they, notes that they made is that these test scores are not comparable to previous years. We still wanna use this information moving forward, because what it does allow us to do is say, set the stage for growth. And as, as you will hear, over the next year, that is what the new A through F report card will be about, is growth. That will be a very large component of that report card. So when you look down through these, there, there are of course some areas that we need to show significant improvement in. And we're beginning to look at those as administrative staff, and I know that the administrators will be sharing those with their teachers, to review this starting point that we receive from these scores. There's also some information on the ACT, and this, this is a great opportunity to set that baseline for it. So although these scores are not where we'd like them to be, this is a jumping off point, and we know that we can improve and grow from these.
Can I take one point, that with all of our math testing and all that, we need to look at where we started this year and where we finished, to see what really growth we had this year. And I think we'll try to get that report for you for next year. And that kinda leads me into communications and everything. With all this mapping, with all this testing, with all these things, we wanna try to help our students and the teachers as best we possibly can. Mark Carroll has been working on our computer for, oh, probably since January. Our Apple leases came up this year, four years, so we had the opportunity to sell them and to get new equipment and so forth. And we're looking at going true one-to-one at the high school again, true one-to-one at the middle school. Rather than Apples, we're gonna buy Chromebooks for a third of the cost that we did against Apples. As long as we can reach that cloud and the sky and the Google, we can get everything that we need to. A lot of our curriculum mapping and that type of thing is gonna be driven by Google and what we can do with Google School and those types of things. So our emphasis is gonna be one-to-one at the middle school and high school, but at the elementaries, we're gonna really focus on the active boards, so that those students that are active with the chalkboard. So we're looking at, right at $433,000 worth of equipment that we're gonna buy for all of our schools. Now, we're gonna sell about $108,000 back on our Apple products and so forth. Might be a little higher, might be a little low, but we won't know that until they come and get it. We're gonna go with one company, because they're gonna come in and do a turnkey job. We're gonna get the Chromebooks from them, we're gonna get the Acti, the white, what do you call that?
White glove.
White glove, to where everything's set on them. They're gonna come and deliver them, they're gonna take them out of the boxes, they're going to put the white boards, the active boards up for us, and basically our guys are gonna have to do that. If we go with other people, we would have to initiate the Chromebooks, we would have to help put the active boards up. So we felt like that their quote was the best. And we've got several quotes, and Mark has done a great job communicating that with the building principals, and working with the building principals, getting the total numbers correct and so forth. But we're gonna be spending about $433,000 and probably term of that in the June 27 for the. STS company?
STS Computers.
What is it?
STS.
STS at Oklahoma City. So we feel like that's important to continue that curriculum mapping and continue that educational process that we started, put it down in the pre-K and get those younger kids active on those active boards, and those kids on one-to-one basis on those Chromebooks.
I might add, I might add to Mr. Parker's. We met, we've met extensively with the administrators and with Mark about this, and one of the things that we're going to do a little bit differently than we did with the MacBooks is, we're gonna really invest in our people and in the use of them. So we're gonna have professional development extensively throughout the year for Google Classroom and Chromebook. We're gonna have extensive professional development on using the active family. So we wanna invest in our people, so that they're able to use these machines and these devices and be successful at it. So we've become more strategic about that, and we're doing some planning right now to make sure that we're prepared for our teachers when they get back in the fall.
And our school calendar reflects more days of professional development because of that, and what we were looking at, so. Good investment for our students. Okay? Okay, resignations. We've got Dixie Meyer resigned from soccer, Seth Floyd resigned from custodial position at the high school, Tammy Claflin has resigned from special ed position, and Tammy Donovan has resigned from high school council. On the reassignments, Ted Schaefer, custodian at Washington, is gonna go to Longfellow to work. Randy Peace was a kindergarten teacher at Washington, now she's gonna take Claflin's place as special ed teacher. Misty Byswander is gonna go from special ed to the high school council position as a reassignment. Really don't have a whole lot of legislative, but I have a couple of things, communications. You can see that you have a letter from the State Department that we are in compliance with our special ed services. And Sherry does a great job with special ed and keeps us in compliance and does a great job with that. So we are in compliance. Also, we have a letter from Northwest Family Services. We had some declared surplus computers, and they needed it, so we gave those to them, and that was a letter of appreciation. Part of legislative action, our Will talked a little bit about. According to the Attorney General, he's ruled that petition has the correct language to go to the voters. And he also said, at this point in time, that even without the money, the teacher salaries will go forth, as presented. I don't know if that's gonna change or not, but I believe the election's gonna be June the 12th on that petition, or they're gonna hear it at that point in time, so.
It's three ports in here on June 12th, right?
That's the way I understand it, yes, okay. Also, a month ago, you've got a lot of board policies and everything. Okay, your board policy is online now, so you can go to the website, go to the board, and then go to the board policy, and look at those board policies, compare them to what we have at this point in time, because we'll ask you to vote on them on the 27th, to accept them whether they're word or whatever, okay? That way, you've got something that you can see from one shift to the other shift type thing.
Weren't we gonna have a committee meeting on some of those? Isn't that what we discussed?
We did it one time, talking about policy committees. Is there title?
Well, this one, you asked us, I mean, wasn't there some discussion?
There's some, there's.
There's some items to discuss?
There's some items on which way to do it, because you get, they give you two different scenarios on which way you can go. So the board could decide which one they wanna go with the administrator.
Are you just gonna recommend one, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that, I just, the ones we were presented had options.
I actually forgot about the committee.
We could certainly get together, I mean.
Or just whatever you present.
So we as administrators, get together and recommend to you all what policy. Okay?
Yep.
Okay? You okay with that?
I am.
All right. Because that's why I brought this up, because you had mentioned about looking at a committee.
It's that or we need to meet to decide, if, if you don't wanna recommend.
It's recommended.
And then I'll be gone, Tim will be gone for sure for the coast convention this week, so we may bring back some more information on legislation and see what's going on. Or beer save.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, items of current business?
Eight point one, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve contract for audit with Charles W. Carroll for fiscal year 18.
I'd like to back the recommendation to the board that you continue to contract with Carroll as his audit.
When's the last time we've put this out for bid?
I don't know that we ever have, since I've been here.
Is it time that we do that?
Honestly, I can't tell you whether or not it has to be approved by July 1st or not.
Or maybe not this year, but next year, we'll get. It's always good to get other opinions. That's just my thoughts.
So we have to approve this one. Do we know the man? We'll look up the when the magic dates are, as far as putting it out for bid.
For next year.
What's the total cost of this? Do we know that?
It's the same amount, he hasn't raised it.
Okay. We'll look that up. About to approve for this year? I think we have to do this one, and then we'll look, we'll work on 19.
Yes.
Okay? And we, we missed on, we'll go about that.
Mr. Florence.
Right, Mr. Florence was here. He brought up a lot of people, even closer in our area, maybe. Some good ones out there.
Okay.
We just think it's time to check, we may be right where we're supposed to be, but that's good.
New diligence.
Okay, we'll work on 19. But right now, we need a motion. I would make a motion that we approve contract for auditors Carroll for FY18.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Eight point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve service agreement with OSSBA for unemployment services for the 18, 19 fiscal year.
And again, we have been with them for several years, 650 for Floyd, so it's $1,261, they have not raised that. And I'd recommend to the board that we go into contracts, yeah.
I move that we approve the service agreement with the OSSBA for unemployment services for fiscal year 18 and 19.
Second.
McDermott.
Aye.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Eight point three, discussion with possible, possible board action, vote to approve contract with Precision Testing Labs Incorporated as best as services for fiscal year 19.
I think we have been with this group since the tearing down of the old middle school high school. And they come in, provide our services, state mandated, and they do a good job, so I'd recommend to the board again, contract with Precision Testing for next fiscal year.
Still moved.
Faggot.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
Slater.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Eight point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve contract with the city of Alba, SRO for 2018, 19 school year. There's some changes, I'm assuming correct?
There is. We'd like to opt for hours for the officers, so that we've got one here eight hours a day and one six, not sharing as much as we've done in the past. And the cost is, Tim, what is it?
Roughly $35,000, I believe.
Extra. And we think it's well worth it for the safety of our students. You know, Mr. Platt does a great job with our young people, he goes in and puts on some lectures and those types of things, so we feel like we need this for our safety of our kids.
I'd make the motion that we approve the contract with the city of Alba for the SRO for the 18, 19 school year.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
McDermott.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Eight point five, discussion with possible board action vote to approve contract with the Woods County Board of Commissioners for contract services.
They have made us a lot of money in the past because they keep track of all of our pipelines, electric lines and so forth. And I'd recommend to the board that we are in contract with Woods County.
Still moved?
Second.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye. Eight point six, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the open student transfers for fiscal year nineteen.
These are students and parents have met a deadline for the open transfer and wish to come to the Alba Public Schools. We've had some of those as emergency transfers, but I would recommend to the board that we accept all the open transfers as presented.
I'd make motion that we approve the open student transfers as listed for FY nineteen.
Second.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Eight point seven, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the OSSBA membership list for fiscal year nineteen.
I'd recommend to the board that you continue this membership.
Would we approve the OSSBA membership for fiscal year eighteen nineteen?
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Okay, eight eight, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the request for the lease of a bus to the First Baptist Church during July sixteenth through twenty-first, two thousand eighteen to travel to Falls Creek at Davis, Oklahoma. First Baptist Church will provide license, certified bus driver, fuel and certification certificate of insurance.
So they meet all of our qualifications for rentals, so they've been renting this bus for several years. So recommend to the board that we approve this.
Make a motion, we approve eight point eight.
Second. Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye. Eight point nine, discussion with possible board action, approval of the temporary appropriations for fiscal year nineteen.
As you can see, temporary appropriation that were presented by the Oklahoma statutes and Woods County. So I would recommend to the board you approve this.
This is ninety percent of last year's budget.
It is correct, that's the way I understand it.
And it's okay to appropriate that senior achievement fund?
Yes.
Is it a hundred percent of the balance?
I'm not sure on that.
What is the senior achievement fund?
That's the achievement awards, scholarships and those types of things.
And we feel ninety percent is conservative enough.
That'll be our estimate of needs and then we'll go back and we'll budget. So just because we have our, buddy's going to give us that estimate of needs, but then we're going to look at budget on what we plan to spend. So yes, because we can budget ourselves at less than that ninety percent if we feel like that's necessary.
But this is giving us approval to budget up to ninety percent.
Correct. And yes, that's conservative now, I, I think it is.
Okay.
When you look at what we just had, what we got collected over a hundred and two percent of what was projected. Motion.
I move we approve the temporary appropriations for fiscal year nineteen as presented. Hanson?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Eight point ten, discussion with possible board action vote to approve bus transportation for students participating in the Goldbug Gulf and Gallup Summer Lunch Program. Transportation will be needed on the following days, June thirteenth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-eighth of two thousand eighteen.
Goldbug Gulf of Gallup feed kids at noon. Basically, the kids that come to our Washington school during the summer, we have provided transportation for them in the past. These are field trips that they would like to take. And I would recommend to the board that we allow this, we will get a bus driver and we'll be able to take them in a bus on these field trips.
Okay, I pointed a clarification. When I look at this, I, I see the field trips, we leave Washington at twelve fifteen, return at one. They're gone for forty-five minutes, is all the field trip would last? Is that correct? Okay, that's, okay.
That's the way I understand it.
It's very close.
Okay.
Bowery Airport.
Sure. Okay, make sure I just read that right, thank you.
Right, I had that last year.
Okay. Pause within that timeframe, okay, fabulous.
That, that's basically what they allow for their lunch program so that their parents can come and deliver or pick them up.
Okay.
Most of them are already at school.
Okay.
And they eat from twelve to twelve fifteen and then twelve fifteen they get the bus.
All right, sounds, sounds good.
I think to the newspaper, they make two trips, divide it in half. It depends on the number of kids participating, but some, when they called me, they said they'd probably make two trips, half, the first twenty minutes and a half of the month.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. I would make the motion that we approve bus, bus transportation for the Goldbug Gulf and Gallup Summer Lunch Program and those dates listed.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Eight point eleven, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one, certified teacher for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year.
We've been looking for a grade school counselor to, to cover Washington and Longfellow as we moved Chastity Gangrick up to Lincoln to replace Mrs. Slater. And everything worked out really well in this deal for Cindy Baker to come back to Alba. We're thrilled to have her and it'd be my recommendation to approve that hire.
I move that we offer employment to Cindy Baker.
I'll second that.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye, welcome home. It's nice to be there. Okay. Nine, are we ready to move on? Propose executive session to discuss AEA negotiations for twenty-five OS section three or seven.
Make motion to convene an executive session.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.